Finally, fourth in session.
Commissioner Nowitzki.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Judge Shaw. Here. Commissioner Schindel.
Here.
Commissioner Hamel.
Here.
Carol Sweets with the County Crook's Office.
Here.
Please stand and join us in opening prayer as they continue the platine.
Dear Lord, please take care of our military wherever they may be. Please bring them back home safely to their families. Please help us make decisions best for the county. Bring us rain as you see fit. And please, most of all, please help this county get back to normal. Amen.
Legion, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, before we do citizens to be heard, does anybody want to talk about nurses in touch? Or please turn off that cellphone. Whoever has that cellphone on, please turn it off. Nurses in touch has got a proclamation on here. And Julie is here for Vi because Vi can't be here this morning. And I want to go ahead and move to those two things first. Does anybody have anything to say about nurses in touch or Vi's report?
No.
Okay. Number eight on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove proclaiming the month of November 2012 as National Home Health and Hospice Month in Karnes County. And allow the county judge to execute the proclamation if approved. Nurses in touch is back there. Kathy, do you want to come up and read the proclamation?
I can. I may have tore someone's lysis. I didn't know. I'll try. Thank you. Thank you for having us here. And we appreciate the fact to work in our county here to provide home health and hospice. Ooh, yeah. All right. Whereas Nurses in Touch Home Health and Community Hospice will join thousands of home care and hospice agencies across the United States in celebrating the month of November 2012 as National Home Health and Hospice Month. And whereas home care services provide high-quality and compassionate health care services to those in need, especially in times where community or personal health has become a crisis and where home care is the most preferred method of home care delivery among disabled, elderly, and chronically ill individuals eager to live independently in their homes as they possibly can. And therefore, we now, the Karnes County Commission Nurse Court, do hereby proclaim November 2012 as Home Care and Hospice Month and encourage and support the participation of all the citizens in learning more about home care and hospice philosophies and care for the elderly, disabled, and chronically ill. And this was signed by. Thank you. Thank you. All right. And if y'all can, Janet, this is that. Charlene Hackney and Janet Wells. These are two of our partners in our office in Kennedy. And we're located across from the new Walmart. And we're next to Southern Inn and Suites with the workforce and all. All of that. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
I make some motions to approve proclaiming the month of November 2012 as National Home Health and Hospice Month in Karnes County and allow the county judge to execute.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries five zero. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hey, Vi, Julie, where are you at on here? You're number 11. That's discuss, discuss, consider, act upon, improvement of county investment policy. Vi did that. It's the same one we approved last year. Vi statute, she has to do it every year. Well, this is an old one. It still says Jeff, Darrell, and Stormy. You weren't there that day, James.
I wasn't.
Nope. You're the only one that didn't sign it. Either that, or you didn't like it. But anyway, this is the same one that we did last year. Vi has to do that according to the local government code, 2256.006, and it's the investment policy. That's all it is. She actually just redid the one we did last year.
I'd like the motion to approve county investment policy.
Will you allow me to execute it?
I'll sound it, Judge.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. What happened?
We answered aye, but she forgot she wanted to.
And then the next one is going to be Vi's treasurer's report. And that's going to be number 21. Is discuss, examine, approve/disapprove the treasurer's report. Did you bring it? Do you have it? Freeze. I'm sorry. I thought you, yeah, but we're the one that just, oh, she already signed it. She brings me the one she signed. No, she should have. There it is. I'm sorry. She usually brings me the original. I apologize. You're okay. She said that her and LaWanna had looked at this. Is that true, LaWanna? Y'all meet?
Yes.
Y'all are the same? No questions? So I don't think there's an issue with that. That's going to be number 21. It's not the bills. It's the treasurer's report. And we just need a motion. That's all we need. They're done. They've already, as long as they need, the treasurer needs all the votes.
All right. I make a motion to approve treasurer's report.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Guys, can I get y'all to sign this, please? And we'll pass it down to Carol.
Thank you, Julie.
Number five is citizens to be heard. Carol, anybody sign it to talk?
Yes, there's three, but I think they want to wait for the agenda item. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Number six is to discuss approve/disapprove design development documents for the Karnes County Jail. That's author Lorraine Daley. There she is. Just talking about you.
Substantial completion?
Design development documents for the Karnes County Jail?
Yes. The, you should have in your packet the documents that were presented to the jail commission for the design development packet.
It's in there.
Yeah, essentially schematic design was reviewed and approved by the jail commission. We went before them and presented the design development documents. We don't have all the review comments back yet, but if there are any comments, they'll be addressed and will be copied on them. The jail commission did not have any, you know, they reviewed the documents and at the time of the meeting, did not have any comments at that time. So we're asking that you accept those documents and as an official just as you did the schematic design documents.
I'll make a motion to approve design development documents in Karnes County Jail.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number seven on the agenda is to discuss, accept the work for the Karnes County Courthouse Phase One project that's substantially complete as of October 17, 2012, under the author Lorraine Daley.
And also, there should have been in your packet a substantial completion document that was prepared by Mr. Fisher. As the project architect, we attended two separate punch lists for the project. One was an exterior punch list while the scaffolding was still up. And the second was the interior punch list. And then Mr. Fisher put together the list of punch items and prepared the certificate of substantial completion. And this is the official document that says that your building is substantially complete as in normally you would be able to move into it if it was a regular building. And in this case, the contract is at the point that you could use it for its intended purpose, which in this case is a little bit different because the building is, still needs the second phase of restoration. But essentially, you now have possession of your building and the contractor is just doing the, what we call the punch list items, which are just minor corrections in the work before they will be 100% complete. And so there's a document that has to be signed as a certificate of substantial completion by the county judge. And the building needs to be accepted as substantially complete officially by the Commissioner's Court.
Ms. Daley, are you the one going over it, inspecting it, and making the punch list?
I participated. The architect makes the punch list and then any items that I see that he misses, we add to it. And if he doesn't add to it, I still have my separate reports that you get a copy of. And none of those items are taken off of my report until they're documented and completed. And then at final acceptance, I will go through every one of the, not only my items that were, or a few outstanding items that need to be done, but I'll go through the punch list also and make sure that all of those items are complete as well as the roof inspection that you had done. There are a couple items still that were left on the roof inspection. So there really will be three documents that I check at the very end at final completion. It'll be my bill report items, the punch list items prepared by the architect, and then the roof inspection. Will all three be documented. Can I see that one? Yes.
Copy of it.
The originals, I dropped off last time on the C I.
I know. I have them.
This is just the county.
This is the one that you're looking at?
Yes. This is the substantial inspection. All right. That's it.
I make a motion to approve design development documents for the Karnes County.
Number seven.
To accept. Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion to accept the work in Karnes County for a project as substantially complete as of October 17, 2012.
Are you giving the commission to execute it?
Yes. And if the county judge should permission to execute. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number nine on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove the following county historical commission appointees to the Texas Historical Commission, A.C. Alonso, Louis Valderamos, Elmo Brockman, Bud Bruce, B. Bruce, Sue Butler Carter, she's our marker chair, Everett Coleman, Joyce Brown Coleman, Maggie Henry Hunt, Yonah Boaldr H. Kendall Jr., Andy Meyer, Alton Newman, Ramona Noon, Alastia Oveda, Joellin Sheeneman, and Sandra Slaughter. I put that on there. Oops. Go ahead, Truitt.
If I can address the wording on that just a little bit. One thing, the only thing that needs to be voted on is the new additions, Joellin Sheeneman and Sandra Slaughter. And these people are nominated, these people are nominated to the Karnes County Historical Commission as opposed to the Texas Historical Commission. We're submitting this report to the Texas Historical Commission because they have to be, in every second year, they accept the new additions to the county Historical Commission.
So this would be for the 1314 term with the new addition of Joellin and we can just amend it to say it's for the 1314 term with the adding of Joellin and Sandra?
Yes. And they asked for early submissions this year. That's why it's at this time rather than later in the year.
That's what Maggie told me.
Okay. So I didn't even say that.
I'm sorry. I just need a motion to approve these people for the 1314 year.
I make the motion.
Excuse me just a minute. Did he, was Mr. Hunt saying that it needed to say the Karnes County Commission Historical Commission?
C H C means County Historical Commission. So it needs to say Karnes County.
But then your next thing that says Texas Historical Commission should be Karnes County Historical Commission.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. To the Karnes County, Karnes County. Let's say Karnes County. I see what you're saying.
Insert Karnes in front of C H C.
Yes.
Go instead of Texas.
Yes, instead of Texas.
Karnes, what you want? Yes. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 10 is to discuss approve/disapprove an interlocal agreement between Lubbock County, Texas, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, acting through the regional public defender for capital cases in Karnes County. This agreement is made pursuant to the Fair Defense Act, Texas Code of Criminal Procedure 26.044B, and the Texas Government Code, Chapter 791, and allow me to execute if approved. What that is, is last year, I don't know if y'all remember or not, we joined the regional public defenders program for capital cases. And we are just redoing it. This year, I think, every year, every year, our contribution changes. And I asked LaWanna, and she said we did put this in the budget. And for year two, it's $2,421. Our first year was free. And so if we're going to do it, we just, we already have money in the budget. We just need to approve the interlocal agreement.
What is it again?
$2,421.
And this is for defense and capital cases?
Yes.
In regards to item number 10 on the agenda, I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Lubbock County, Texas, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, acting through the regional public defender for capital cases in Karnes County. This agreement is made pursuant to the Fair Defense Act, Texas Code of Criminal Procedure 26.044B, and Texas Government Code, Chapter 791, and allow the county judge to execute. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Carol, you need to sign this, your copy and my copy. Then I'm going to give you the paper cut copy. Okay. If you'll sign a vote for me, I need to mail the paper cut copy back, okay? So don't take it with you. That'll give us to number 12, which is discuss the injection well at FM 1353 and Highway 181 and possible communication with the city of Karnes City in Karnes County to protect the city's ETJ in regard to injection wells. And that's Cheryl. Cheryl Moynihan, excuse me.
Okay, I'm standing here again with some community people leaders that are, who are concerned about this injection well going in at County Road 1353 and Highway 181. It's an ETJ of the city limits. We have numerous concerns. But what we're here for today is to ask for support from the county. We've already been here once and y'all will let on our behalf. We appreciate that. But we are looking to see how the county, together with the city, can work together so that we can prevent these type of things from coming so close to our city. This, if this well comes in so close to the city and the ETJ, it will prevent the growth of our city outwards or we're going to end up with having these injection wells right in our city almost within. So we're asking for some support. I also understand that, you know, all the things we've talked about, about the concerns of these, the traffic, the water stratus. There's like, I think they only own eight or nine acres of land that they have and how it's going to go into our formations. And, but Ellosso Water Lines, have water lines that run right by there. The city has water lines that are going out. So I mean, people that aren't in the ETJ, so, or that are in the ETJ. So we're concerned about all of these issues as well as there's churches and daycare centers right there by, and residential areas. It's going to bring 243 more trucks per day into that intersection. That intersection where they plan to put this is not even, the turning lane, those trucks don't have an opportunity to get straight back on the road before they arrive there at that intersection again. It's a long, narrow strip of land that they're trying to go back in on. We've also heard that there is a possibility of a truck wash. I'm not sure if they're washing trucks now or not. I see activity on there. So I'm not saying anything about that yet. I'm not certain about that. But if that be the case, where's that water going? And anyway, we're just asking for some support from y'all today. We have a hearing December 13 in Austin with the Railroad Commission. And we would just like to see any way that the city and the county may be able to work together to come up with some kind of solution to. I know that these injection wells are necessary. We have to have them for production in the county. But we need to be sure that they're strategically placed. We can't afford to be having more accidents and all of the things that go with all these injection wells. So with me saying this, I would like to, Mr. Ruckman has something to say as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners. I'm Hugh Ruckman, third, in Karnes City. Want to thank the court for your previous support. I think y'all sent a letter about three months ago to get the hearing scheduled by the Railroad Commission. Again, it's about the injection well on Highway 181 and Farm Market Road 1523. And like Cheryl said, I realize these are necessary for the oil and gas industry that have an accounting. But I think this location is really unique and merits special consideration by the court for proximity to the city of Karnes City. And in fact, you've got elderly apartments that's real close to that. You've got a daycare center very close, two churches, residential areas, you know, just a lot of health and safety concerns. Think about this, plus the traffic concerns. Over 200 trucks a day coming through that intersection, which is tons of trucks already. I think that y'all are well aware of. Initially, this company, I think, only has nine acres. And you talk about pumping the product of 200 trucks a day down into a nine acre area. I'm not an expert on water, hydraulics or anything. It's just hard to believe that nine acres is going to hold 200 trucks a day, day after day. It's not going to migrate. Nevertheless, the city of Karnes City voted to do what they could to help us fight this location. Like Cheryl said, the hearing is December the 13th in Austin with the Railroad Commission. And city of Karnes City, I think, has already voted to spend up to $10,000 to help with legal fees to fight this. And just appreciate any help the Commissioners Court could add to that in thorough evolution of your attendance up there. Like I said, again, I think this is kind of a unique situation. Appreciate your help.
Truitt, I know there's an action item on here today. But can we ask, I know Mr. Pippen had mentioned something to me about a resolution or something. I guess that's what you were just saying.
Yeah.
When is the hearing, December?
It's December 13.
So you're asking for, I mean, like, I'm just saying for future reference because we can't vote today because it's not on the agenda. But so I'll know what you're wanting in the future. We're looking for some funding in a resolution, something similar to what the
Similar to what the city did. And like Cheryl said, too, I mean, this is one that's proposed for this location. I mean, you know, we're concerned if the city's going to get kind of landlocked with these if we're not careful and kind of work together. And like I said, I know they're essential. I mean, we don't know that. You know, there's a, you know, 200, 300,000 more acres in the county.
Can you send me, Mr. Pippen, what you did?
Mr. Pippen, yes.
Did you bring a copy?
No.
The council did authorize, like I said, the expenditure, the legality of it. That's going to be between our attorneys and the group's attorneys that they have. Council did authorize that both attorneys may try to come up with a recourse on how can we combat this. The one thing that we are asking Commissioners Court support on will be the resolution that I talked to you about. Our attorneys are preparing that now in support that we appear before the Railroad Commission and ask them to deny their permits. And I will present to you, Judge, once it's completed, and ask the Commissioners Court to reconsider that.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear of what we were asking for. I didn't mean to put anybody on the spot there. Anybody else on that topic? Dina, did you want to say anything?
Well, basically, they did an awesome job. But basically, there is a group of concerned citizens. We're not the only ones. They're supporting financially to, for fees for our attorneys. There is a big group, especially people that own land around the area. I know that Witty, they were going to be here, but they're busy with their business. But we do have a hearing December the 13th. And the city has been very supportive. We attended the meeting last week and they are, you know, looking into, they did pass a strong resolution. And we're here just to see what the county can do for us as well to then together and see if we have a stronger voice when we come to Austin. Thank you.
Yeah, I understand that this might seem to put y'all in a certain type of a situation because you are the county. And they're going to end up, we're going to have these injection wells in the county. And so we understand that, like, you might have some people come up and say, well, how can you help them? And you're not going to help. But we don't want to out here either. But we're just asking that you look at it to, look at these and help us take it through so that they're put in, maybe a more strategic area. And when people, people approach me every day wanting to buy property by my house on the highway. And, you know, when I, before I, I wouldn't even sell it. But I guess we need to, as concerned citizens, look at it and say, if you think of selling your property or whatever, you know, just like the golden rule, ask, like, ask what they plan to do with the property or something. So because like, if you wouldn't want it next to you, why would you want to put it next to your neighbor? Thanks.
Judge Shaw, this injection well business is something that we need to address as a county. This is an example of one that definitely needs to be stopped. There's another one that's being put in less than 500 yards from the two Ellosso wells outside of Falls City. We have, Ellosso has complained to the Railroad Commission. Nothing. You know, we service four counties with water from Ellosso. And if the injection well tanks our water, I don't know what we're going to do in this county and the three other counties that we serve. It is a problem. I don't have an answer. The answer is Railroad Commission, and they're not, they're not hearing this.
Yeah, I think a good point, too, that I just, I got online yesterday because I saw the topic on the agenda. And I noticed that within the last two years, there's been 23 to 24 disposal well permits approved for Karnes County. Going all the way back to 1978,
Going all the way back to nineteen seventy-eight, there was less than that number in place. So that, I mean, the approval rate is unbelievable. When you look at the... when it was submitted and the approval date, in most cases, it's less than a week before they just rubber stamp these approvals. So I think, as concerned citizens, it's critical for us to stand up and, you know, fight this as much as possible. Again, I know that they're necessary. Yesterday, I was going to the Vets Office in Nixon. I counted five disposal wells on eighty within a ten to twelve mile right there. And I was like, do we really need that many back-to-back right there? As most of you know, we fought the one in Helena, right there across from us. And it's only been... I mean, the permit was withdrawn with the comment that they would be back. Now I hear that there's a possibility of another one that's going to be considered not even a quarter of a mile down the road on eighty-one going toward Rungie, which is right across the street from where we own property and what we're hoping to build a home. Now we have to totally reconsider if there's a possibility of a disposal well that's going to be put in there. So again, I think... I'm not sure what the recourse is as far as a county is. But I think if there's a possibility of us to put some kind of criteria on where the location of these wells are relative to residential, commercial, business-type facilities, I think we need to jump on the bandwagon as soon as possible and start doing something. The Railroad Commission seems to be looking the other way. It was very costly to fight the one that we did in Helena. So I know it's not cheap. But I think that we have to take a stand and do something to be able to preserve our environment here in Corin County.
Anybody else have anything to say? That was a discussion item. We're moving to number thirteen and ask to discuss approve/disapprove advertising for a shed covering on a commercial motor vehicle weigh station located on Highway one eighty-one in Mexico.
All right. We have a plan for the weigh station, a shed, and I checked on the price on it last year. The officers would like a shed to work under to inspect trucks when they work out there. And we came up with a shed of a hundred and thirty-two feet wide and a hundred and twenty-five feet long. Would be economical at that size range. If one of those spaces would be over the scale and one right past it, and so you'd have two spaces on the side that could have trucks under there during hot weather or rain weather that they could inspect. And I don't have the criteria ready for this today, but I have it coming and working on it, getting the bidding documents ready. And I think we could get this... we'll get it in a few days and get it out for bids and have this ready to take... take set bids, open bids on December... our meeting in December. Do you want to have any questions about what it would be?
Is that a free span with no support?
It would be... it had to be free span, be posed on the outside, probably concrete pillars at the bottom coming up about four feet. Then a galvanized metal structure above that, all galvanized, galvanized roof with the painted side coming down ten feet on each side and straight over from end to end. Ten feet downside for shade. And the galvanized, galvanized structure.
All pearl.
Yes. So it would be painted, painted major. That's what we have. I'll take it.
I make a motion to approve advertising for a shed covering a commercial motor vehicle weigh station located on Highway one eighty-one.
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number fourteen on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove advertising to parking at the annexed building located at two-ten West Commerce on East Square. And again, that's please.
Okay, there. Also, I don't have the documents ready today. We should have them within about ten days to put out the bids, bid this on a design bill. They'll have quite a bit of information on it if they want it. We're not hiring an architect to draw this up. And we're bidding it written up by someone who's knowledgeable and presented for contractors to bid. These contractors will have to give an engineering stamp on what they bid on. So they'll have to put their engineering stamp on it. So it'll save the whole architect phase going in between and that. And I think we have enough information written down where they can do this. This... I'm sure there's going to be several contractors with bid on it. It'd be a hundred... over a hundred fifty thousand dollar project. And I'm proposing a concrete parking lot, which is stable, permanent, behind the annexed building with the two handicap parking spaces right at the back terrace level by the back door by the break room area. And the rest, entrance off of Bouchelle Street, back there, an entrance and an exit circle around.
I think that's wise to make.
That also, I think we can do the same time, December... the first being in December, December the seventh, whatever day that is.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
What day is it following the one I'm using?
Thursday.
I make a motion to approve advertising parking at the annexed building located at two-ten West Galvert Offices on East Square.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number fifteen on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove the request of EFS Developers LLC, a Texas Limited Liability Company, to abandon the fifty-foot right-of-way commonly known as Old Kennedy and Carnes City Road, and deed without... and then deed without warranty of course for the right-of-way to EFS, and that's Jeff Chance, attorney at law. Is there anything to get from there? You have your package. You'll see it. They put on a little...
Yes, I have the package.
No, I saw these guys.
Oh, they have it.
That's it. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, as the packet states, we own the property on... or we have contracts on the property on Highway one eighty-one. Directly behind that property is the old Kennedy Highway, Carne Highway that's been abandoned, we believe, somewhere in the fifties as far as facts we can tell by state. And we would like to have the county convey that property over this fifty-foot. We'd like twenty-five foot conveyed to us, twenty-five foot to the landowner behind us so that we could put in a drainage channel to take care of the zoning... or I'm sorry, the flood zone that is to the south end of our property with box cover is going under the road toward Walmart.
Hey, y'all the ones that have just started dirt work?
No, sir. We're just south of that... we're between the Energy Lodge that's there. We have the three acres to the north of them. We're just south of the new hotel that's currently under dirt work. Basically, the way the property runs, the way the zoning, look at Exhibit eight-three in your packet, on the south end of the property, mainly the water comes across us in the catty corner from the northeast... I'm sorry, the northwest corner down to the southeast corner, kind of the catty corner to our property diagonally. And what we'd like to do is channel that water down and into the south of our property into the box cover. We have an engineer that's running that path.
So you bought the Cheshire property?
I couldn't tell you who owned it before.
Is it cleared?
Yes, sir. Well, it's... we haven't done any improvements on it, but there's not a lot of... not a lot of treatment they're doing right now. But there hasn't been any activity on the property at all. Because I understand that other property owners have been using this, you know, abandoned right-of-way for whatever purposes. There's a pipeline or some sort of, well, maybe a water line or something on it, but it doesn't extend down to our property or where our property limits are.
Do you understand... do you know where it is?
There's a map in there. He even gave you the other side of it.
Try to do front turn at this one.
It's right back your way.
It's across the road from Walmart. Yes, sir.
We're just in the development. They just wanted to drive the water.
That's what I'm trying to figure out is that there's an Energy Lodge.
Yes, sir. We're just to the north of the Energy Lodge. They're on one point six acres. We have three acres to the north.
Okay. So there's excavation going on. You're just a little north of that.
We're between excavation and the Energy Lodge. I can show you on the map if I can.
You got the lower portion of it?
So you're actually right across from Jerry Bee's?
Yes, sir. The restaurant. Yes, sir.
Between Energy Lodge and the excavation?
Yes, sir.
That's what we're talking about.
That's right.
Right there where that concrete culvert is.
On the back side of the property where the right-of-way is now.
Yeah, but there's a box cover.
There's a box cover. Yes, sir.
Under one eighty-one.
Yeah. Just right at that southern end of the property is a Zone A floodplain area. And then as we move towards the north, it's not. But in order for us to establish our base flood elevation and be able to divert the water and be able to maximize the development of that property, we'd like to be able to channel the water around us and then into that box cover.
Because there is a natural little channel.
Yes.
Right there, right now.
Correct.
Because I believe that that... that those waters that come through there and go underneath the highway, I believe there's a landowner over here on the other side of the highway that that concrete box cover feeds his tank. Is that...
I'm not sure what... I know it goes under the highway. I know that the highway department or someone has put up some barriers to slow down the water. And then there's a channel that goes in front of the development, in front of Walmart and the new bank and stuff heading south. But as far as where that ends up going, I really don't know downstream.
I guess I'm just asking some questions here because I don't want to get caught in something where we're actually going to bring a little bit more water underneath the highway, and these neighbors are not aware of it. They're not ready for it.
Sure.
Because I know that that... I think, I believe, I'm right on this, it goes into that tank and spills around, then it goes behind Jerry Bee's, and it goes... there's some... there's some name for that little creek, if you will. And it goes, it crosses Walmart there by the bank, and then it goes...
There shouldn't be any additional water generated or any flow. This is basically just a diversion of what the normal watershed would do to us. Instead of having it sheet flow across us, we're just directing it. We'll have some improvements down on the bottom to slow the water down so that it doesn't create any hardships downstream. But there's no additional hydrology affecting this or generated from this.
In other words, you're not taking the water from your piece of property and tilting it and making it all go into this little canal and then go underneath the highway?
That's correct. It's coming down, but we're just diverting it.
Is half of it going to the canal and the other half? Because there's a bar ditch in front of this property.
Well, some of it will continue to come through the property. Basically, we don't believe that there's going to be enough water to affect either way, but because of the Zone A floodplain, FEMA requires a base flood elevation. The county's requiring a base flood elevation be established. We're happy to comply with that. We want to do it as well. But instead of having the water come directly across the property and affecting our ability to maximize the development, we're just channeling it around, but we're not creating any additional water flow.
Y'all are not the same people that are affiliated with the Energy Lodge?
No, sir. We're not affiliated with it. Similar product.
And it doesn't have anything to do with the property south of you, behind the Energy Lodge?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Salute.
Thank you.
James, did you...
No. The only thing that usually when a culvert or something is built, they'll see how many acres drain into that place and how they're going to... engineers come in and develop that. And this way, you're actually changing the course of the water the way it used to be. And I'm sure you have to get permission and all that. But you're only going to change three acres, right?
Yes, sir. Basically, we have a civil engineer that has done the flood study. And he has proposed two options for us to take care of the water that comes onto our property that goes to the natural culvert that's down on the south end of our property. And so we have option A, which is to come across the property, which, like I said, severely adversely affects our ability to maximize the development of the property. And then this other channel, this twenty-five-foot channel that we're proposing, has been engineered to handle the water, to divert it around without creating any hardships downstream from us.
How many acres hit that concrete culvert? You said they did a study on it, right?
I'm not sure. Basically, what they have to do is take the three acres, take what, parking and rooftop that we're going to provide on there, calculate how much water flow will be provided there. And then they're obligated to take a certain percentage of what's upstream from us. And there's different levels based on elevation and flow and whatnot. And I'm not an engineer, so I can't take exactly what I went into as calculations. I just know that what's presented in your packet was performed by an engineer doing a flood study.
My concern is, I know it's only three acres, and you probably got... I'm not sure what you got there, maybe three, four hundred acres hitting that culvert, maybe more. But it's pretty... it's just only three acres. I'm just concerned about people across, because every time something...
It's coming across anyway. It's just going to be coming in a different...
It's just going to go a little bit slower, because any time that you divert water, this was going actually over your property, and if you reroute the water regardless, it's going this way. So you're going to... the flow's going to go probably not that much faster, but there is a change in flow because otherwise you're pushing the water. That's the only thing. But you said that you were going to slow it down, right?
Right. And not a hundred percent of the water's going to be diverted on there. We'll still have some that'll come across the property. And then what's generated on the property will be going through the bar ditch, too, and coming down. So, I mean, it's basically taking the water that comes in and splitting it to our south and to our, I guess, west east, and then coming back down. And then whatever is generated on the property will also come down as well.
Who's the neighbor that's going to get the twenty-five feet to the west there?
I couldn't tell you who the property owner is back there. It's like a big ranch or something.
Black Diamond?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Look, we're saying, so they don't know that we're going to... the neighbors don't know we're going to give them their twenty-five foot? Is that what you're saying?
It would take all fifty, but we don't need it, and we don't think that's fair to the adjacent landowner.
Well, yeah, that's pretty clear. You get twenty-five, they get twenty-five.
Exactly. Everyone takes.
And is the water canal going to be right in the middle? So they're going to have half of a canal, and you're going to have half of a canal.
Well, no, sir. I mean, all we need is twenty-five feet. So it would be...
Twenty-five feet of flat, low ground.
Right. It'll have a three-to-one slope on both sides and then a flat bottom channel coming around and back onto our property.
Mr. Mussum, can we do this? If the other landowner doesn't know we're giving them land, can we do this without the permission of the people across the street that are going to get... not that the flow's probably going to make much of a difference, because I've done a lot of studies on this, and three acres probably is going to make a whole lot of difference. But do the landowners...
I'm not sure if they've been noticed or not. The... like I said, there's been a lot of activity on there. You know, right now, I'm not sure, you know, what's...
They should be noticed at least.
But more than likely, they have a pretty nice fence coming along. More than likely, they're not going to do anything other than just, you know, have it part of their records for title. But as far as any improvements or any...
So you're just wanting twenty-five foot of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the fence line on their property line now?
Yes, sir. I haven't had it surveyed, but I believe it is based on surveys. I've seen it is. That fifty-foot right-of-way is just sitting there.
Okay. In regards to item number fifteen on the agenda, I make a motion to approve the request of EFS Developers LLC, a Texas Limited Liability Company, EFS, to abandon fifty-foot right-of-way commonly known as Old Kennedy and Carnes City Road, the R O W, and then deed without warranty a portion of the R O W to EFS.
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'm going to oppose, but the reason I'm going to oppose is nothing against you or nothing against the landowners or anything. It's just that I'm going to cover myself here, because if you haven't... if you haven't... or you haven't... I know you've had an engineer duty studies and all that, but you have no confirmation of the engineer, no paperwork where I can see the acreage or anything. The neighbors across have not been notified. The other neighbors that we're giving them additional land, which we don't even know they want it or not, have not been notified. How can we really make this decision right now with not all the information presented in front of us? I cannot do that.
Okay. Motion carries four to one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number sixteen and seventeen are not ready. So we're moving on to number eighteen. Number eighteen is discuss approve/disapprove requesting nine-one-one addressing assistance from ACOG. The author's Tracy. Tracy, I'm not sure really what you want. I called Joe Ramos and said they might be able to offer you a little technical assistance.
Yeah. We need something.
He says he doesn't really have anything to offer you. Marathon had approached ACOG. We're having a lot of issues with nine-one-one. We need somebody in there rapidly. I mean, it's ridiculous to have a town or a county going this fast and people not being able to get nine-one-one addresses because EMS doesn't work by longitude and latitude.
So we can get somebody hired in there.
Are you here for Marathon? Are you here for Marathon? Okay. Are you, are you with the Joe? Did Joe talk to you about this?
He had me coming. I'm the 911 coordinator for ACOG.
And he said you could provide some technical?
Well, with issuing the addresses, we've been trying to figure out how we can get y'all caught it. Because I understand it's a little bit of a backlog. Sorry. We have some, we have a G I S specialist in the 911 division. We've never done addressing them before. It's never been a part of our schema or our program. But we have talked to Mike and to Dean and they want to come and meet with y'all to discuss, you know, taking on some addressing for y'all in the interim until y'all can hire somebody. And Ricardo, our G I S specialist, could train that person.
We're hiring that person.
Yeah.
So as long as we know that y'all can do it.
Like in the interim, I think, you know, Mike and Dean probably need to come and speak with you, Judge.
They can speak with Tracy. He's with the 911.
Tracy. I guess I'll meet with you and get your contact information.
Right.
That'll work.
To assist y'all.
Okay.
Do you have any questions or?
No, not right now. All we need is your, your number where we can get the police. So when we get somebody hired, that we can get together and have somebody come down and give, give them an idea of what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, we have some samples. We, I guess Helen had given Ricardo some addressing permits that were on hold, energy textur, what it's on.
Yes. I've been on the phone with Philly ideas.
They actually provide the X, Y coordinates and we are able to match those up to your map on point. And we have the formula to figure out how y'all do your addressing here. It's just a matter of confirming that with you, making sure it's accurate. And then field verification, that's something you don't have the opportunity to do. So I know that's a requirement for your, so those are just little questions that I have, but I'm sure we can, without any interim, can get y'all some help.
Thank you. I make the motion to approve request 911 addressing assistance from ACOG.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 19 is the acknowledgement of Helen Hernandez is a full-time special projects coordinator effective 11/1/12 at fiscal year 13. The annual salary is $24.40, which is $11.75 an hour, and that's crazy.
I just wanted to put that on there to let everybody know that Helen is in charge of special projects now. And we're looking for a 911 person. As soon as we get that done, put that on there also.
Number 20 is to discuss, approve, disapprove, the purchase of approximately 5,400 square foot EMS building on 2449 acres located 1538 County Road 345, 3678 118, the amount of $500,000 in that space.
I put that on there because the day that this was passed, I was absent. I wasn't here to be able to hear everybody out and see. So I'd like to make a decision with y'all. But I'd like to hear from the EMS people and see what they have to say.
May I approach?
Certainly.
It's a very nice building on a very nice piece of land. But that being said, there's no room for expansion and I think it's overpriced. Now, before I go any farther, I'd like to thank all of y'all because you have done a lot to build a new building for EMS, especially Commissioner Yar, Commissioner Rand, Ashendel, and the judge. Now, Commissioner Yar has came up with a piece of property, I understand is north of Corn City. It would create problems because of the distance involved from where most of the EMS volunteer members live. I would lose, lose about half of my people because of the distance involved. There's rules that govern, there's labor union, not labor union, labor laws that have to do with the amount of area that you can restrict people to without paying them full-time. Now, I believe at this point in time, EMS, at this time, I believe road and bridge has a greater need to get moved out of the location they're in because of the danger. EMS vehicles, it's routine for us to be in heavy traffic and they increase traffic like we have. So it's not, it's, it's no more dangerous for us now than it was in the past. But road and bridge, you're talking about large trucks coming out of the lot there in Kennedy, and it is more dangerous. Okay? I would like to see, my preference would be to see road and bridge be put at the site north of Corn City. Five acres seems like a lot of land, but the piece of land they have now probably bumps three acres. And they're probably going to need that whole five acres. Now, saying that, the next thing would be turn down the Texas regional building at County Road 345. And once road and bridge is moved out of the present location, then we'll have enough room there to build a new EMS building in Kennedy there, right where it is, just moved back from where it is. That will leave us extra room once we clear the buildings out, clear the land out after we build a new building. That will give us room for future expansion. One of the things we need to look to is emergency management. Right now, we don't have any vehicles. We have some trailers. We have some stuff. We don't have any place to keep it. Tracy, you were talking about the 911 coordinator and special projects. We really don't have a suitable place to house them. What we need to be looking at is building an EMS building that has also some other capabilities, put some of these other offices into. We have a large piece of property there. We can sell off part of that property and get a huge sum of money probably. But then we'd still have to go out and find Crawford to replace that, which is not an easy thing to do. My recommendation is to not buy the property on County Road 345 across from the hospital, to place road and bridge north of Corn City and to, once everything's moved out, then place EMS building, the new EMS building there at the property in Kennedy. But also at the same time, put some forethought into it and go ahead. We, we need some backup equipment for our radio equipment in the county to help the sheriff's department. There's numerous things that we're going to have to consider in the next few years. I mean, our county has changed and it's not going to go back. You know, we're going to see more. This year, we've seen a 50% increase in EMS runs. Are there any questions?
I just, just wanted to hear your opinion and, and find out where y'all stood and what you wanted. But that's what we need to do is what y'all want to do.
Tracy, the, the real center of our activity as far as EMS runs is the 72 corridor, primarily the Kennedy-run area.
Right.
Now, that doesn't say, I'm not saying that that's all of the runs. Probably about 30% of the runs is, is north toward Corn City and, and on up Helena and Gillette and Falls City. But we need to keep our units primarily in the areas where they're used the most. And Kennedy is that area. I mean, that's the highest density population. We all know statistics. The more people you have, the more runs you have. But like I said, my recommendation would be to not purchase the property. I wouldn't because we can, we can build a building that is, we engineer. All we'd want is a metal building. We're nothing, nothing fancy. You know, just a well-isolated building that can manage to stay up in 200 mile per hour winds such as we have from hurricanes, that type of thing. But we need to put a lot of thought into it before we build it. And we need to consider a lot of other services. We've got property down there that we can put other offices on, property that's bought and paid for. And we're going to have other offices. I mean, let's face it, we're running out of space here quick. And it's only going to get worse. It's not going to get better. Questions? Carl?
Who, who owns that property behind you?
Ah.
On, over there.
The main street.
By the hospital.
By the hospital? I'm not sure. I've heard Witty's own it, but I'm not positive at all of it.
Well, you have the show barn, you have the EMS building right there and a radio station.
I understand Witty's own property behind it.
Right.
I may be wrong. I have no-
How much do you own?
Clyde would probably know.
I'd have to look back five or so acres. Witty owns the property, I understand, behind that. Just.
So if he needed, if hypothetically, if we bought that property, if he needed to expand, he'd have to go to the radio station and try to acquire some of that five acres?
And that wouldn't work because there are underground radios from the tower. You can't do any construction on that property.
So we're locked into what we have there. If we have to expand, we're, we're locked into what we have. Now, obviously, we're going to have to go to paid services sooner or later, one form or another, whether we contract it out or whether we form our own. The, the date is coming. But we can put it off until we, you know, we need it. 1,500 runs is not enough runs to have a paid service. We need it to be at least up around 2,500 runs.
No, thanks, Mr.-
To make it, to make it, I'm not going to say profitable, to make it financially feasible, okay? Carl, anyone? Tracy?
Yes, sir, Johnny. Well, even though it's, it's right there in Kennedy, it's more in a centralized within the county, right?
It's pretty much centralized in population density.
Okay, so even if, just say Falls City blew up and all your calls were toward Falls City in five years, you would still be centralized enough to take care of everyone, right? There in Kennedy?
Yeah, more or less.
And the buildings that we're looking for is just a metal building and they come, you order one to size and they come engineered.
That's correct.
They come engineered already. They set it with concrete on it.
We're looking at basically a metal building with phases and brought, we're, my plan is to go ahead and set up the building for a paid service.
With bedrooms and a kitchen?
Yes.
Then we can get a local contractor to build all that inside.
Yes. We can, we can do the whole thing. I'm going to say by local contractor, but you all know as well as I do right now, all the local contractors are snowbound. So we'll have to get whoever we can. If we, I prefer a local contractor. I buy local as much as I can.
Yes, sir.
Pete, you've done a lot of work on this. Any questions?
Well, if we build a building, if we clear that out and build a building, do you have to have a building with living quarters in it to start with?
Not necessarily, no. We can leave the living quarters unfinished. We can lay the building out far in the living quarters, but not finish the living quarters. And that would be a preferred way to go.
But I do know sometimes, Johnny, some of your, some of your medics do come in or your E M Ts come in when it's raining or whatever.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to drive in from wherever.
That's right. We do have people that do spend the night.
And they spend the night with their ambulance. And I mean, for that, I don't understand why we would deny it in the bedroom. They're out saving lives, so.
Well, but we can phase, this, this is mine of things. If we can phase in, we can build, when we go paid service, we're going to have to have more ambulances and more personnel because make it financially more feasible. We're going to have to do more transfers and that type of thing that we don't do now. But initially, we can build one bedroom and with showers and that type of thing and cover that. That, that's a very minor thing. Pete, you understand what I'm saying?
I'm just asking the time and complexity of getting it done.
Yes.
Basically what I'm asking.
We can do-
We, we need to get it done.
I think it needs to be pre-planned, but it needs to be done in phases. But like, like I said, we're going to have to consider, there are many things we need to consider when we're building this building. Not just EMS, but all emergency services, all first response services, fire police and law enforcement. Any questions from anybody?
Gary.
Mr. Scott, if you were afforded the opportunity to build where you're currently located versus, versus the immediate proximity to the hospital?
Yes. I would stay where I was simply because-
Let's not, let's not get into that discussion right now. I don't-
You'd rather stay.
I would, I would stay where I was. And the reason it, it still comes down to labor laws, you can restrict the movement of people to a certain degree. But if, if you tell someone you've got to stay within three minutes of this location, then you've got to start paying them as a full-time person, okay? There, there are many, many laws that affect all this. Okay? Reasonable answer.
True.
Judge?
I make, but we just take no action on this for the rest of time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thanks, Johnny. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Gretchen, Becky, Norma, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Guys, I think you're doing a good job.
We want you guys to be, where you, you know, you guys would probably, everybody can sit there and say whatever. Y'all have the worst job in the whole community.
Well.
That's, that's literally seeing it all.
It's, it's really, it's just a job like, like all of you do. It's just, we have to be taught to-
I disagree with you.
Look past. We look past a whole lot, okay?
But thank you, Gary.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for all of your consideration. And like I say, I know Tracy, you put in a lot of time. Judge, you put in a lot of time. And I know Pete, you put in an extremely amount of, a large amount of time. But at this time, like I say, I think we need to concentrate more on road and bridge and get them safe than EMS. We've got to cover over here. We're not, you know, we're doing fine right now. We don't have to have a building right now. We need it soon, but we're okay.
Excellent, Johnny. Please take it.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do.
I would like to ask a question. We have two agenda items that, that refer to tax planning. Can you just get those? Is there some reason?
I said they weren't ready. That's why.
When will they be?
You know what? I got a phone call saying they weren't ready, Ms. Denson. They're not ready.
Why are we waiting?
You know, Ms. Denson, I didn't ask. They weren't ready.
Well, what, I know, but what, what is not ready?
We're going to move on to the auditors report, number 22. That's you, Luana.
I'm sorry, ma'am. If I had an answer, I'd give it to you, but I don't.
I was told they weren't ready. That's my answer. That's, go ahead, Luana.
I was hoping you would say, I was listening to the radio not long ago and-
Luana, go ahead.
The announcer said.
Luana, please go ahead. Okay. I've answered your question, Ms. Denson. Go ahead, Luana.
I'll have a copy of the report as previously mentioned when the Treasury report was approved. They do concur. If you'll go to page 10, you'll see the debt requirements as of September 30th of 2012 for fiscal year 2012, which we just completed, showing as zero. We made all our payments in a timely manner in the fiscal year. The next page is our debt requirements for fiscal year 13. And you'll notice the balances, the principal amounts, the interest amounts and the total payments and the associated due dates. On the very last page is items of interest. Total county funds available as of September 30th, 2012, $12,469,395.37. Total county funds invested as of September 30th, 2012 is zero. We bring all our investments in at the close of the fiscal year to facilitate the ease of closing out the books. Investments were reissued for the first of 2013 on October 17. Sales tax receiveded September 17th, 2012, for the month of June was $773,038.62. Our total sales tax receipts for fiscal year 2012, $6,257,474.46. The sales tax receipts for the same time period for the prior fiscal year, $2,645,253.76, which is an increase of $3,612,206, $3,612,220.70, approximately 136.55% increase. We requested on September 18th courthouse restoration reimbursement grant funds to the tune of $128,075.36. We've recently received notice from the comptroller's office that on that grant request, we have received $824,000 plus of that. They disallowed costs that were submitted in regard to arraigned daily services. I have a call in to those I have a call-in to the Historical Commission, because my understanding from Sharon Fleming was that those costs would be reimbursable.
I think so. I think I heard that too. Okay, thanks, Luana, for that one. Number 23 is you again, Luana, for the bills.
You'll notice on page one, the first section is costs involved in phase one of the courthouse restoration that we are paying in this cycle, $78,515.69. Most other costs are of the norm. If you'll page, turn to page nine, I do wanna point out a couple of road and bridge expenditures that are out of the ordinary. About halfway down, you'll see two payments to French Ellison Truck Center, $1,134.41 and $1,109.32. This was for the installation of risers for the fifth wheels on the new tractors that were purchased this summer for road and bridge. The way those were set up, they were not compatible to the usage that we needed, so we had to spend an additional $2,200-plus to get those serviced aboard.
We bought the truck at one place, and we bought the trailer in another place, and they don't drive.
We've also had to install fenders on the-
Fenders to keep them from knocking their back window out.
Rear fenders on the tractors that they did not come with.
So, they actually raised the fifth wheel up?
Yes, my understanding is.
You have to raise the, you have to put higher, when you put fenders on the truck, you have to put a higher-
Oh, I had to raise because the fenders-
Knocking back glass out. Does that come out of your maintenance budget?
Yeah.
You mean fenders are extra when you buy an 18-wheeler?
Couple of the trucks.
Wes is going, yes.
There's a bunch of them out there that you don't have to put any of them. Blood all over the truck. There's no sense tearing these brand-new trucks up. That's why you get to them.
I replaced the back glass in one of them that they kept for getting the US. And see, the old trailers that we had on the other trucks, they got fenders on them. The new trailers didn't come, which don't have the extended fender on them.
Is that the only thing, Carl?
Yes. The total bills paying this cycle are $446,922.47.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is sue Judge.
I make the motion to the attorney.
Mark?
Yes, sir. Hold on.
Tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock, I don't know if anybody would be interested, but Judith Zapparin's gonna be here in these water injection wells. You might be able to discuss some of them with her, because she does carry a little power often.
She will be at City Hall at 2:00, yes.
She'll be at City Hall, too?
I thought it was at Becky's.
She changed it to City Hall.
Oh, she changed it.
Tomorrow, right? Tomorrow? What is today, Wednesday? Or is it Tuesday? Okay, it's the end of the month. It's not the second. Okay, you're right. It's Thursday. It's tomorrow, and it's at City Hall. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.